Good evening. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, April 5th, 2018. Please rise as Pastor Warren Gray from the Vine Church leads us in the invocation this evening, followed by our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Brian Chandler, the Director of Plent.
Mighty and gracious Father, I thank you for your great love for us and for the ability that we have to together in this place this evening. I pray, God, for our city council members and others in positions of service and leadership. We're grateful for their desire to serve in the roles in which they have been entrusted. We ask that you bless them as they take on the task of serving the people of Temple. Give them wisdom as they make decisions and clarity to know which path will lead to the common good of all Temple residents. We ask that you fill them with a sense of the true needs of this community and its people, as well as a hunger and a thirst for righteousness. May this place tonight be a place of mutual respect, understanding, and harmony, in agreement of thought and in disagreement. And, God, I pray that we all, regardless of our positions, would heed the example of your Son and find it within ourselves to be voices for the voiceless, advocates for the marginalized, and heroes for the defenseless. May we be a community of neighbors so that our love for others may be seen in the proceedings here this evening and in the life of our community. And may our love of neighbor never be confined to those who look, believe, or think a certain way, but may it extend to each and every person, especially those most in need of a neighbor. We pray these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Ready to go. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you both very much. Now is time for public comments. Citizens who desire to address the council on any matter may sign up to do so prior to this meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. No discussion or final action will be taken by the city council. I have a list up here, and it looks like there's a number of people that would like to speak regarding the library. I think there's half a dozen or so. Obviously, we'd love to hear from each one of you. If you would like, though, you can appoint one or two people if everyone's gonna kinda say the same thing. So I will absolutely leave that up to you guys. But first on the list is Charles Wood. Mr. Wood, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles L. Wood. My address is 4505 Lost Creek Court, Temple, Texas. I came here, you don't know me from low to hay, so you need a little bit to know about me. My resume is I have a master's in aeronautical engineering, a master's in business and administration, and a master's in project management. I'm a graduate of the U.S. Air Force Test Pilot School. I came here because I was reading in the paper some things that I, and I'm also rent a hangar out at the airport. And I noticed that the AMCOM hangars out there were absent without anybody in them for a period of about 14 months. Then along came Skip with a plan based upon forecast models of what could occur. Well, those are estimates. The city evidently bought into the plan and issued a lease, which is a contract. And then Skip went about executing the contract. And just from observations, it looks like he did a pretty fair job. He started off with one helicopter. There's now four helicopters in there. Execution of a plan more than 80% is considered phenomenal. It's about like Tesla, like SpaceX shooting the Tesla up into the, into space. What I read in the paper didn't add up to what I observed. And it looked like they used flawed units to measure and justify its position. Looking ahead, it appears that the growth will be approximately four times greater than what was forecast. And the latest one that hasn't been executed yet is aeromedical transfer, a Learjet and another airplane. I'm just curious on why you would terminate a lease when he has agreed to continue the That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
My name is Randy Brosart, and I live at 5251 Old Cavan Lane in Belton. I come to speak today in favor of the library displays in the Temple Public Library. Salvation, that is how I knew and described my experiences in the local library when I was a teenager. I knew I was different from my brothers and everyone else that I knew. I didn't look any different from them, and I couldn't figure out what made me different. Why were other kids taunting me, bullying me, and calling me queer, faggot, fag, gay, homo, and other names I can't even use here? I could not go home and talk to anyone what was happening around me. I was afraid and ashamed. I was convinced that I was the only one in the world that felt this way. Went to the library, the public library, in a small town, and I looked up homosexuality in the court catalog. That's how long ago that's been. I didn't exit the library because I was ashamed and afraid. I didn't want anybody else to know what was going on with me. I read what brought me a lot of relief. I read that I was not the only one. Others like Michelangelo, Shakespeare, Alexander the Great, Leonardo da Vinci, David E. Jonathan, Shakespeare, James Buchanan, the President, Julius Caesar, and so many more. In essence, the library saved me. I found out I was not sick or demented. It was simply I was born gay. In spite of what many people would believe, this country was not founded on the rule of religion. It was founded on the rule of law. The First Amendment guarantees us both the freedom of religion and from religion. Public libraries preserve culture, educate, and engage in order to build understanding on important issues that need exploration or could be difficult to cover. We must maintain the separation of church and state. We must not tolerate censorship. Censorship is the child of fear and the father of ignorance. Finally, I would like to remind everyone that love is desired by everyone and love is deserved by everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Heidi Fuller?
I live in Belton, Texas, at 1345 Luka Road. I'm here to speak on the library. I teach at Temple High School. I am also one of three teacher cosponsors, my other two are here with me, of our Gay Straight Alliance, or GSA, at the high school. Our GSA is primarily meant as a safe space for LGBTQ students and their straight allies. We meet often, we share stories, we create a place to discuss issues and struggles, both personal and in our larger culture. Temple High School is, for the most part, an open space where kids are both allowed and encouraged to be themselves and to explore what that means without judgment. However, while this may be our environment and culture at school, many of our students do not have that same support at home, and in fact, some face serious abuse at home for identifying as LGBTQ. Many of our students cannot be open with their parents, and in this last year alone, we have helped carry many of them through some very dark days. Thoughts of suicide, panic attacks, fears of losing their parents or family, fears of losing the lives they dream of, simply because of who they love, who they identify as, and who they are. These things are not a choice; it is who they are. Most of our LGBTQ students knew that they were not hetero or gender-normal by the time they were in second or third grade. A few of my students have told me they have known since birth. But so many keep it quiet and carry the deep burden of being silent and of hiding and pretending to be someone other than their fullest and truest selves for years. It is exhausting, it takes a toll, and it often takes years to undo the fear and damage of hiding themselves for so long. I tell you all this to tell you that these kids need our support, not only at school but in their broader communities. These kids need places that not only provide them resources to build their best life, but a community that seeks actively to understand them, to learn beside them, to welcome them as equal and vital members of that community. Beyond our schools, the public library in this or any city is that foundational and crucial space from which this is built. To censor or deny anyone to have a place or a voice in that library is actively creating damage, dissension, and divisiveness in a community, causing it to falter rather than to thrive as it could and should. In conclusion, to quote author Angela Clark, "A library is not just a reference service; it is a place for the vulnerable." From the elderly gentleman whose only remaining human interaction is with library staff, to the isolated young mother who relishes the support and friendship that grows from a baby rhyme time session, to a slow-moving 30-something woman collecting her CDs, libraries are a haven in a world where community services are being ground down to nothing. Libraries are vital; their worth cannot be measured in books alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. And I'm not gonna say this right. Erica, Erica, you know who, you know who you are. Say your name clearly when you get up there.
My name is Erica Gianbavo. I live at 322 Harvest Semedo in Temple. I'm here this evening to also give my support to the Temple Librarians in light of the continued stress that they're enduring over the LGBT display that they put up back in June. I've been involved in this process since the very first library meeting in October and several meetings between then and now. As a certified Texas teacher-turned-homeschooling mom, the library is a huge and greatly appreciated resource for me and my family. We're there at least once a week, sometimes more. Throughout this entire process, I've heard over and over again that it's okay to have LGBT books in the library, just don't display them. Displays can be very powerful, and I witnessed this with my own child. My family, my nuclear family's vegetarian, which is not the norm in central Texas, and on one of our weekly visits to the library, my six-year-old son was looking at a display. The display was actually right where the LGBT display had been. The display this time showed books about being vegetarian, and it had books on how he could make snacks all by himself. His entire body filled with his joy, and he grabbed one of the books and he said, "I'm a vegetarian." It wasn't about the book. In fact, we checked out almost every single book on that display when they were tucked away, hidden on the shelves. His joy came because part of him was acknowledged in this display. And it wasn't just acknowledged, it was acknowledged in a positive light. Our LGBT community deserves that same joy to be acknowledged, but more importantly, to be acknowledged in a positive light. The City of Temple Librarians are college-educated. They talk with members of our community every single day, every single hour. I trust that you will allow them to continue, to continue their endeavors to reach out to what we know is a statistically underserved group. Thank you.
Is it Travis McLeod? T-R-A something. Going once. No Travis? Okay. Next on the list is Irene Anderson-Henders. You guys have to print. Block letters, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Irene Andrews. I reside at 287 Wayne Drive in Nolanville with my wife, Joan. I am here tonight to express my gratitude to the Temple Librarians. I support their efforts in creating timely, interesting, informative, and engaging displays that reflect the diversity of the communities they serve, and I'm asking you to do the same by refraining from making any change in library board policy that would constrict or censor their work in any way. In March of 2017, NBC News reported that the 2020 census will not acknowledge LGBTQ people. And I quote, "The U.S. Census Bureau is required to issue a list of categories it plans to track three years before the survey is conducted. Tuesday's list shows categories ranging from race to gender to the types of plumbing in homes and the length of a person's daily commute to work. Each category is followed by a table showing federal agencies that rely on the data to make decisions about law enforcement, health care, equal employment opportunities, and more. No previous U.S. census has ever included LGBTQ Americans, which makes it challenging for federal agencies and researchers to accurately track the size demographics and needs of this community. Tuesday's initial release from the Census Bureau had proposed including lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people." Why mention the 2020 census at a city council meeting? Because this is the very reason we need library displays that are inclusive. When demographics are good for government and good for business, you must ask why would a whole segment of our society deliberately be excluded from the census? As the discrimination and disenfranchisement of LGBTQ taxpaying citizens continues, a couple of simple, thoughtful, informative displays during two weeks of Pride Month is a small but very significant act of inclusion. LGBT people live, work, and raise families here. We all benefit from understanding more about the community of people we are a part of in Temple and Bell County. I therefore urge you to stand unmoved with the Temple Librarians. This library must remain open as an inviting place of learning and growth that creates opportunities for its patrons to think deeply, to stretch their frames of reference, and leave richer having made that visit to their local public library. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Irene. Next on the list is Josh Welch.
I've got some later on the table.
Okay.
I think I may just skip Tracy McLeod. Was it Travis?
Yep, I can see that now. That's fine, that's fine.
I too am here to speak in support of the library, and I hope that you'll bear with me and try to see the underlying message in my humor. Good evening. My name is Tracy McLeod. I live in Belton, Texas. I want to thank you for supporting the Temple Public Library. They are an invaluable public resource for people like me. You see, I was born left-handed person. When I was born, I seemed normal. My family didn't realize I was left-handed until I was old enough to start feeding myself. It was hard at first. My family tried and tried to force me to eat with my right hand, but it just didn't feel natural. Sure, I could eat with my right hand, but it took more effort and it just didn't feel right. I always ended up with the spoon in my left hand. Once my family came to terms with the fact that I was left-handed, they stopped trying to force me into being something that I wasn't. They just let me be me. I felt more peaceful, and so did they. When I started kindergarten, it was the same story all over again. My writing teachers always put that pencil in my right hand until they finally accepted I was left-handed. My school years were tough. The struggle with right-handed desks, spiral notebooks, and scissors is real. To look at me, you wouldn't have known I was left-handed, but the kids knew. They teased me some, but not too bad, and I could take it because my family loved me for who I was and taught me that it was okay to be different. Others weren't so lucky. They were forced to write with their right hand and sometimes beaten with a ruler if they were caught writing with their left hand. I've even heard there's an ancient belief that some still believe that left-handed people are servants of the devil. As an adult with, in touch with reality, I realized that this is absurd. But can you imagine what hearing these things can do to a left-handed child's self-esteem? This is where my appreciation of the library comes into play. The library serves as a wonderful safe space for closeted left-handed people and others who are on the fringe of society. There are many books in the library on left-handedness and professionally-trained librarians with college degrees who are able to help people find books they are looking for. They also create invaluable displays that provide samples of books that are in the library that folks may not have known were there. These services are available to all, even left-handed people. August 13th is National Left-Enders Day. Libraries across the nation will likely have informational displays that raise awareness of the everyday issues that lefties face in the world. I hope you will visit the Temple Public Library to learn more about left-handed people so you will better understand our struggles and remember, learning leads to understanding, understanding leads to compassion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McLeod. Up next is J.D. Zepner.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro-Temp Council, citizens. Last meeting, I'm sitting back here, I kinda ran across something I was talking about on 218-0984R concerning adoption of a resolution of intimate domain on some people's property. So it got me thinking, with the MLK Project that y'all running downtown, there was some properties down there that came across the Bell County Sheriff's and Tax Appraisal Auction. One of the properties was 402 South Sixth Street, which is Little Joe Street. It started out at $500 and sold at $5,000 to one of the bidders. There was another property that was in another auction that one of my neighbors bought, and I believe it was 207 East Avenue B, right behind the police station. Had a great big whale that was dug underneath the ground behind that house. That would've made a real nice little project, having a wishing well in the MLK festival grounds. But, you know, y'all covered it up. What I'm saying here tonight is how come the auction people, Bell County Sheriff's and the people in the Bell County Board of Tax Appraisals that sits on the Temple Appraisal Board too, because it's the hay city of Temple, here's some property. Here you go. Let's cut a deal, $300 or $1,500 of that property. But anyway, y'all turned around and sold that one property that my neighbor's, he bought it for $1,500, and he, y'all bought it back from him for $5,000. The other property, it sold for $4,500. But when I checked the records at the county, it was already in the city's possession. I think that would save some city money, the tax people some money, if the Bell County Tax Appraisal people in the sheriff's auction would say, "Hey, here's some property for y'all's project." Well, I guess, I don't know what to say about that, but I just think it's a great waste of money for us, the city, and the citizens that the tax appraisal property, or selling these properties instead of just giving it up, especially for the MLK Festival Ground project. I guess that's about it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Zepner. Jeremy Jurassic? Is it? Yes, yes, so it's part of another agenda item? Yes, that'll be fine.
I'm Ray Maddox. I reside at 4927 Sean Patrick Glen in Temple. I want to thank you for this forum you provide constituents to voice. Unfortunately for you, people that are happy don't attend city council meetings. But I wanted to briefly address the airport tenant issue. Having been in business for myself since freshman in college, I know the values of consistency and security in building a business. I also know that your mandate, among many others, is to bring jobs to the city and to maximize your facilities. I know that the AMCOM buildings haven't brought in the 30 to 40 jobs that maybe you would like, but you should also know that in this, just this past month, and these businesses could speak better to this than I, but they have run about 70 transient customers through this facility, which translates into hotel rooms and many meals and probably a trip or two to Walmart, maybe a movie, maybe a few miscellaneous other things. I'm not sure Marines roller skate a lot, but I know that they bring quite a bit of money into the community. So I would just like to be assured as an airport advisory council, or airport advisory board member, that our efforts, we put into creating jobs and/or aviation-related facilities and businesses at the airport are not negated by throwing the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Item three on the agenda is a public appearance. We'll receive comments from Mr. Boyd Tackett III regarding his lease for two hangars at the Drawn Miller Regional Airport. Public appearance time is limited to five minutes.
Yes, sir. Sir, may I, may I bring these out to the council?
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Pro-Temp Davis, esteemed members of the city council, city managers. I would like to petition the council for a few extra minutes if possible, since there's no one behind me, so I may read the full length of my remarks. If that's all right? I need about seven and a half minutes total.
That's fine. Please do.
My name is Skip Tackett, and I'm the president of an aviation company called Utility Aviation Incorporated, a wholly-owned subsidiary of Brunner Aerospace LLC. Both organizations are service-disabled, veteran-owned, and operated small businesses. Mr. Brunner asked me to convey his apologies to the city and the city council for not being here in person, but he's dealing with a personal medical issue and is unable to attend. Thank you for allowing me the time to address the city this evening. Quiet professionals. That is a title used by people in the special operations community that don't brag about what they do. They just do a very good job and keep going. Most of the time, this is exactly the way that we want it. No spotlight or recognition, just the personal satisfaction of a job well done and getting the mission accomplished quickly and efficiently. Sometimes, however, the lack of recognition of that behind-the-scenes effort can create an impression that nothing at all is being done. Nothing could be further from the truth. I am one of the quiet professionals by profession, and I'm here today to break the silence and discuss some of those people, discuss some of those background operations that you haven't heard about but have contributed directly to the people in the city of Temple and played a part in the Temple Airport, just being named General Aviation Airport of the Year. I do not have sufficient time to go through the package you were just handed in detail. As you look through them later, you will find some definitive financial metrics and performance efforts backed by letters from key people involved to show what we have achieved. I will highlight some of these as we proceed. Let me start by saying I understand that the city is under no obligation to renew or allow the first option year of three options that were granted in the original lease. I'm not here to argue that point at all. I'm here to simply get our accomplishments and actual financial impacts to the people in the city of Temple on record. I have provided a slide from the original proposal showing what we said we were gonna try and do and what we have actually accomplished. As you will see, four of the original six brief initiatives have been accomplished and are operational and benefiting Temple. Plus, we brought in ITIS, our tenant and strategic partner. To further support them and their growth, Brunner Aerospace has just signed a letter of intent to purchase a of intent to purchase a Shortz SD-3-30 turboprop airplane to bring here to support them. I would like to take this opportunity to make one request of the city council, that the airport and the city continue to support ITIS by negotiating an agreement directly with them to stay in Hangar 20. They have made significant commitments to this community by permanently relocating their headquarters and moving families here and bringing in hundreds of people each year and buying thousands of gallons of jet fuel, as well as adding a significant number of takeoffs and landings, which directly affects FAA funding. Anyone in business can tell you that it's virtually impossible for any size company with any amount of resources to fully establish themselves in a new location completely in only one year. However, UAI has seen steady growth since we first arrived in Temple in 2016. Here are some numbers I'd like to highlight. 2016, $7,484.70 paid to the city of Temple. 2017, $372,660.76 paid to the city and local vendors. 2018, $69,896.99 paid to the city of Temple so far this year. Total 2016 to 2018 dollars paid to the city of Temple and local vendors and businesses, Our remaining 2018 projections based upon active contract awards and other initiatives such as the Learjet and the Sherpa, $970,720.70. Total fuel purchases directly due to UAI, $86,059.9 gallons for a revenue of $220,034.68. Hurricane Harvey support, 29 fixed-wing air ambulances and 200 personnel. I have included a letter from Mr. Darby Wicks, the Director of Operations for Airmed International, and the person responsible for setting up the FEMA-directed relief effort at Temple. You will see that the reason Airmed International came to Temple was because UAI was in place and we threw open the doors to help out our fellow Texans. That unprecedented effort was part of the airport winning General Aviation Airport of the Year. I've also spoken to Mr. Leviticus Lewis, the National Response Coordination Branch Chief and the Response Director for the Operations Division of FEMA, detailing the part that UAI played in the first-of-its-kind effort. The relief effort executed here is now the standard in the national playbook for disaster relief at the FEMA level. We've trained 27 total pilots on-site, 25 special operations pilots from the country of Jordan, and two from the Charlotte County Sheriff's Department in Florida. The feral hog eradication program, we've brought in 159 hunters. UAI and our local partner GNT Outfitters have made a significant impact helping the local farmers and ranchers in the Temple area. The amount of money saved by our friends and neighbors is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is done at no charge to the farmers and ranchers. We've had people fly in from the countries of Jordan, Australia, China, and the Dominican Republic. National veterans support. UAI and GNT Outfitters are both veteran-owned and operated and are sponsors of a national veterans' support organization called 22 Kill. This organization works tirelessly to try and help prevent the 22 veteran suicides that occur nationwide every single day. We have spent hundreds of hours of our own time and flown over 237 veterans on our gunnery range and our feral hog depredation hunts in the last eight months alone. Most of those folks come from out of state and they spend money in Temple, and this brings the national spotlight once again to the city of Temple. UAI supports locally-sponsored events with the facility. We supported Ribs and Rods last year when they were rained out at Bend to the River. They raised money to support the Ronald McDonald House. We're supporting them again this year and have set up a raffle to provide roughly $25,000 in support, six times what they raised last year. UAI does not charge a penny for the use of the facility for the entire weekend. We've also supported the Flyin' Hot Event that the airport hosted last fall. We support the Temple Fire Department conducting driver training on the ramp, as well as Scott and White conducting medical training in the hangar. UAI has never turned down a single request for support using this facility from the airport or the city. UAI is pleased with our accomplishments from these last years. With no communication or inquiry from city management, we felt that the city was pleased too, so we were surprised when we were abruptly asked to leave. I would like to highlight the timeline leading up to our notification of non-renewal. On the 14th of March, I sent a letter to the city manager's office requesting to have the first option year on our lease approved. You have a copy of my letter in the packet that I gave you. I received no communication at all until I was notified by email at 5:19 PM last Wednesday evening, the 28th of March, that my lease, which would end on the Saturday, the 31st of March, would not be renewed. A copy of that letter is also in the packet. I was given only 72 hours notification, which included Good Friday as a city holiday, although I asked for approval 18 days in advance. In the letter I received, no reason was stated for the non-renewal. UAI does not understand why the city chose not to renew our lease, neither in the final meeting where the lease was granted nor in the actual lease were any financial or performance requirements listed. No metrics were detailed as criteria for approval or denial of any of the three one-year lease options. With no defined standards, we thought that our performance met expectations. In conclusion, UAI feels that we have more than held up our side of the agreement with the city, and we have brought in a significant amount of economic support to the Temple area in the short time we've been here. I'm very disappointed that our contributions are not deemed to be enough for the city, so we'll take our efforts and customers elsewhere. We appreciate the opportunity given us by the city of Temple. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett. Councilman comments? Okay. Item four is annexation and public hearing. We'll receive municipal service plan and conduct a public hearing to review comments on the possible annexation of 1.310 acres of land out of the William Gilmore Survey, Abstract Number 339, Bell County, Texas, in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, located at 2391 FM 1237. Ms. Larraly.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro-Tim, and council members. And as you mentioned, this is for municipal service plan, and it is for 1.310 acres of land, and it's in our extraterritorial jurisdiction. Today is the first public hearing for this municipal service plan, and then tomorrow at 8:30 in the council chambers here will be the second public hearing that's scheduled for this municipal service plan. And on the screen, I have a picture of the property in question, and since it is in the ETJ, it's a little far out there, I have some streets labeled on the plan. At the bottom of the screen, you can see Moore's Mill Road, and then Brewster Road, and then FM 1237 is where the property is located. And so you also see to the west is Old Howard Road, so that gives you a little reference to where this property is in regards to the rest of the city limits. And so this property is subject to a 2008 development agreement that deferred annexation until development is proposed or expiration of the agreement, which is in 2020. And in this case, the applicant brought, I mean, bought some property from Oliver, Royce Oliver, and so that is part of why we're here today. They have asked for annexation because of this reason, and also because of the property that has been sold. The property is going through the plating process, which is pending this process, and that is known as a JS Clark addition. And then this is on the screen, the survey of the subject property, which is asking for voluntary annexation. And as you can see, it's fronts on FM Highway 1237. And as I mentioned, the applicant bought the property from Royce and Diane Oliver, and so you can see that their property actually wraps around this, the applicant's property. And so the petition was approved per Resolution Number 2018-9051-R by city council on February the 15th of this year, and that was to direct staff to develop a municipal service plan. And so part of that, the service plan was reviewed by all relevant departments, and there are no issues associated with that review. And so as I mentioned, today is the first public hearing for the municipal service plan, and then tomorrow morning at 8:30 back in the council chambers for the second public hearing. And then, just to give you a little, as part of the annexation schedule, first reading for annexation for this request is scheduled for May the 3rd at city council, and then for second reading on May the 17th of this year. And so it's part of the municipal service plan, basically, that is just to ensure that the same level of city services for this property upon annexation as other properties within the city of Temple, if annexation occurs. And then with this municipal service plan, no capital improvements are proposed by the city of Temple, and as I mentioned, the service plan was circulated to all relevant departments, and there were no issues. And so that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And also, the property owner's person is here representing them, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larraly. Councilman questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being no comments, I will close the public hearing. And council, remember, we meet tomorrow at 8:30 for the second reading of this item. Item number five is the consent agenda. All items listed under this section are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member and will be considered separately. Staff has requested that items 4K and 4T be removed for, I guess, to be tabled, correct? Be tabling those items? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items, I'm sorry, the consent agenda less items K and T.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Davis.
Aye.
Moving on to, now we need to, do we need to do those two separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to table item 4K.
Five.
I'm sorry, it'd be 5K on the consent agenda.
I move to table item 5K on the consent agenda.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Davis.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to table item T on the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Davis.
Aye.
Now moving on to the regular agenda, item six, consider adopting a resolution authorizing approval of a dual-street name of West Avenue A slash Santa Fe Way on a section of West Avenue A between South Third and South 11th in the city of Temple, Bell County, Texas, and it's Resolution Number 2018-9100-R. Mr. Deckman.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro-Tim, council members. Thank you for taking the time to consider what I'm going to present to you here. So this is a street dual name requested by David Blackburn from the Temple Economic Development Corporation to dual-name part of West Avenue A. So the background, there is a policy that was originally adopted in 2002, the street and park facility naming facility, that was a policy that was updated in 2015 to allow requests to be made to the city manager in writing for a specific name, and the names could be allowed to be the related plat or subdivision. So with this case, I'll walk you around my map. To the north, you have Central Avenue. To the south, you have the rail yard and the depot and the railroad museum. To the east is Third Street. To the west is 11th Street and Whistlestop Park. Avenue A is this segment highlighted in yellow on your screen. So this is the site plan for the dual name. It's adjacent to the Santa Fe Plaza, which is currently being constructed. There's two office buildings on there. One will be occupied by the Temple ISD Administration, and the Santa Fe Business Center, which is to the east, will be occupied by the Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce and Workforce Solutions. So the dual name would apply to just those buildings. The address numbers already exist, and the Avenue A address would continue to be valid if they so chose to use it. It was requested, like I said, by the Economic Development Corporation for marketing purposes since it is on the Santa Fe Plaza, that we've got that name recognition, and the courtesy letter was sent out to, you know, let folks know, you can use this on your brochures, your marketing materials, your branding. So staff recommendation is to approve the requested street dual name, case FY-18-01-STR, and I am here for your questions.
No questions? There being no questions, I'll entertain a motion on item six.
Move to approve item six as presented.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Davis.
Aye.
Item seven on the regular agenda, 2018-9101-R, consider adopting a resolution pursuant to Chapter 2206, Government Code 2206.053, finding that a .639-acre permanent easement situated in the Nancy Chance Survey, Abstract 5, Bell County, Texas, is necessary for the construction of the Charter Oak Water Line and authorize the use of eminent domain to condemn the property. Ms. Landair, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Demiers.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro-Tim, council. This evening, we'll go over our request for eminent domain for a permanent easement. Present to you the project overview, why we need the property for the project, and ultimately our request to use eminent domain. This is for the Charter Oak Water Line project, and it's a new transmission water line in southwest Temple, roughly parallel to Charter Oak Drive, and the project is necessary to replace deteriorating existing facilities and improve service along the route. Phase one of this project is complete, and phase two requires acquisition of easements from 23 property owners. Lone Star Right-of-Way Services was selected as the consultant to assist with acquisition. And here is a map of Charter Oak Water Line. Phase one began around Parkside Drive and then came up to essentially, close to Charter Oak, and that part is complete, and we are currently working on phase two, which does parallel Charter Oak Drive all the way up to essentially loop through 63 and I-35. And the property that we are discussing tonight is property labeled Property 17, and it's right here. And all appraisals are complete, and we've made offers to all the owners. We have acquired 18 easements, and we have agreements for five easements, and with closings, they're being coordinated. And if you'll recall, back in August 2017, council authorized eminent domain to acquire one of the easements, and negotiations are ongoing with the remaining property owners. Tonight, staff is seeking authorization to use eminent domain to acquire one easement. And in this situation, it is a little different. We were actually able to reach an agreement with the owner. However, due to some title issues that arose after the agreement was made, we cannot complete our transaction through traditional closing. Here's a survey of the easements. An initial offer was sent May 31st of 2016 for a .639 acre easement. At the time, the owner was living out of the country. Lone Star was finally able to make contact in April of 2017, when he returned to Temple, and agreement was reached in May of 2017. Lone Star began coordinating closing, and the owner went out of the country again and still remains out of the country. And we were working to facilitate closing, and in the process, updated the title commitment, and it revealed that a federal tax lien had been recorded in February of 2018. Therefore, we cannot proceed with traditional closing. So we sent a final offer letter on March 22nd, 2018, as required by law. So due to the unusual title issues with this property, the city is unable to acquire it by agreement. And in order to meet the construction timetable, staff's requesting authority to use eminent domain. The final offer- The final offer has been presented to the owner, and therefore, the city will proceed to condemnation if y'all approve that tonight. And this process can take several months, which is why we are seeking this authority to initiate the process immediately. And I'm available for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? There being no questions, I'll entertain a motion on item seven.
I move that the City of Temple approve Resolution Number 2018-9101-R and authorize the use of the power of eminent domain to acquire a permanent easement on a property located along the Gulf Colorado and Santa Fe Railroad in Temple, Texas, and more particularly described as being 0.639-acre, situated in the Nancy Chance survey, Abstract 5, Bell County, Texas, and being out of and a portion of the remainder of a called 8.632-acre track conveyed to Juan Luis Leon and Celine Alvarez Leon in document number 214-00040316, official public records of real property, Bell County, Texas, for the construction of the Charter Oak Water Line.
Seconded motion.
Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Item eight is the first reading of public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance establishing a speed limit of 45 miles per hour from the 5100 block of South Fifth Street to the 6400 block of South Fifth Street.
Well, counsel, we're, sorry. This is the first reading for the post, speed limit change for South Fifth from the 5100 block to the 6400 block of FM 93. This is due to the continued growth along the South Fifth Corridor and to the future growth that's expected. This has increased the number of connecting streets on the very south end of South Fifth Street. We feel due to these events, there's a need to decrease the speed from 50 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour in this area. We performed a speed study and found that the current 85th percentile speed to be 53 miles per hour. At this speed, an increased amount of traffic along the intersection of South Fifth, and is, and that is the appropriate time to reduce the speed limit. Available for any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
I would just like to comment, being as this is the district that I represent. I get more calls every week about the traffic on Fifth directly related to the Loop, but also between Marlin Wood going towards Temple College. So, thank you for this, but constituents in District 3 say, extend it north soon.
Anything else? Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
J.D. Zepner, 402 South 26th Street. Yeah, that's a good idea to lower the speed limit. Couple, I guess, back in December, I was working out of town. I was traveling down Highway 77, I guess, through Giddens area. And I had one of them little trailers that has your speed, that comes up when you drive by. I notice we have a couple of those too. But one thing that caught my attention real quick, if, they had one that had red and blue lights on it. So, if you was coming down there, and the thing said 30 miles an hour, if you went 31 miles an hour, these red and blue lights will start flashing. That did get your attention to slow down. And I say this, we had that problem to lower the speed limit. I know the city has a couple of them things. I know some other cities around here, but they don't have the red and blue lights flashing when you don't make that speed at that time. Especially a stranger like I was driving through there, I didn't know the thing was taking pictures or what's. Because I tell you, you go 31 in the 30s, that thing would flash red and white, blue lights. It might be a good invest in something like that for our city, just not on this project to slow down, but also on 35 between Belton and Temple. Because we did have some accidents and fatalities of, you know, DPS, troopers, tow truck drivers, stuff like that. I think it might be a good investment for the City of Temple and the citizens and the safety of the people, if y'all consider the next time investing some money into something like that with the police department to get one that flashes the red, white, and blue lights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zepner. Any other comments? About 10 years ago, the City of Temple set one of those up in front of my house. My max speed's about 14 miles an hour. And that's it. I can't sustain it very long either. Okay. No further comments. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item eight.
Make a motion for approval. Seconded motion.
Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Item number nine is the first reading of public hearing of item number Z, FY-18-13, consider adopting an ordinance authorizing rezoning from general retail to planned development multifamily three with a site development plan on 4.203 plus or minus acres for a five-story apartment building situated on Lot 5, Block 1, Temple Mall Edition, replat number one, addressed as 1210 Azalea Drive. Ms. Monette.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, council. Tonight, we have the first of several planned development cases. This one is for a rezoning from a general retail GR district to PD MF3. It was heard before the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 20 and was tabled and was recommended to council through action that was taken on March the 5. Some background on the property. On the upper left-hand middle portion of the screen is an overall view of the property, and it is shown in red. It is 4.2 acres, more or less, that has been recently replatted from the Temple Mall property last fall. It does front along Azalea Drive and is adjacent to the mall property on the backside and is across Azalea from Walmart. It was, if you remember, the old movie theater. It is part of a larger mall redevelopment effort and does remain in the ownership of the mall. And as I said, it's currently zoned GR. The proposal from the developer is for a five-story apartment building that would contain 140 units of one and two bedrooms. They would have amenities of a pool, resident plaza, courts, and that sort of thing. They have proposed additional landscaping than over and above what is currently in our code requirements. They are proposing to construct a sidewalk along Azalea Drive, the entire length of their property that actually meanders underneath their street trees. And this PD is designed to address some of the setback issues due to the odd shape of the lot and to ensure compliance with the project characteristics that would exceed the UDC requirements, since it is front and center and very visible. Some additional details on the property, it is in Temple ISD. And for the first time in staff's memory, Temple ISD did return their letter in support of this project. It was reviewed by the Development Review Committee in February on the 5th and again on the 8th. And just as a reminder, the DRC does, consists of various staff departments in the city, and drainage analysis was also provided. There are traffic challenges along Azalea. Since the western portion of the property shown in the gray on the screen with the green around it is, that portion is under private ownership as it's currently constructed now. The city right of way is the white portion, and then it stops basically in line with the subject property. The mall owners have agreed to dedicate, since this whole portion here to the west does belong to the mall at present, they've agreed to dedicate the right of way to the city through an agreement with the city manager, and that would allow Azalea Drive to be improved as a city street all the way to the 31st Street signalized intersection, which would address some of the traffic concerns with this project. It is proposed as a cross-section to be a minor arterial in the city streets. This would also allow for future connection to the east and some properties, currently it stops here just to the east of Lowe's Drive. And as one additional note, no parking signs have been installed along the property with Azalea to limit the truck parking that had been previously a problem on-site. And just to highlight an additional larger view, there has been a memo of understanding with the mall ownership that would allow this dedication of property to occur, and then the city would realign and reconstruct it. The current area zoning of the property, it's outlined in the blue dotted lines, is GR, as I mentioned earlier. And if you'll see, that it's in almost a C of GR, and the line portion to the north is a PD, but it's still based zoning GR with some C uses across 31st Street here and to the back along the area where Lowe's is and owns that property. There is, I will call your attention to a, to multifamily development here to the east as well. The future land use map has the entire area as auto-urban commercial, and this is in partial compliance with the proposed use of the property since multifamily is not an allow use in commercial generally. The surrounding areas, of course, are auto-urban commercial with a small amount of suburban commercial here on the lower right-hand corner. Water and sewer are available to the property. On the thoroughfare and trails map, you will see Azalea is depicted as a local street, although it could be reclassified once it's realigned and brought completely into the city system. There are no nearby trails proposed. Lowe's Drive is shown as an orange line, which means it's collector, and this would make this proposal in compliance with our thoroughfare and trails map. Some photographs of the site. The top photo is from the site looking across Azalea into the Walmart parking lot. On the left-hand side at the bottom is a view of the site looking kind of north and a little bit, I guess, to the east. And you can see that most of the property is already developed with a parking lot. To the right is a view of the grassy portion. There's a small portion of the site that has not been paved. And another view of the site showing the grassy portion, and then from the site, if you look kind of towards, back towards the north, you'll see Temple Mall itself. Looking towards the east, there is an undeveloped property between the subject property, which is shown at the very bottom of the photograph on the top. And this undeveloped portion of area does not belong to this project and is under separate ownership. And the bottom photo is looking into the site, and you can see that it is, remains mostly developed as a parking lot currently. Along Azalea Drive, the photo on the left was taken shortly after this project became studied and brought forward by the applicant, showing the truck traffic that was commonly parked along Azalea. It was mentioned in comments from citizens as a potential problem since this property would have two entrances onto Azalea. The city placed no parking signs along the roadway, and as you'll see in the right-hand picture, currently, there are no trucks parked there, so it is clear. This is a slide showing that the Temple Mall replat and where that property kind of falls in relation to the entire mall itself, which is in the bottom corner. Just a reminder, you'll see it again in my other presentation, that a planned development does allow and is designed to be a flexible overlay zoning district, which would respond to unique development proposals. And of course, this property is definitely that, that would have special design considerations and land use transitions by allowing evaluation of land use relationships to the surrounding areas through the development plan approval. And per an adjacent section of code, a planned development does require approval of a site, a development site plan that is binding, and this has one. And here it is. As you can see, the building is in the dark gray. It's set back on the lot so that it will fit, and it is sort of a boomerang shape. It is proposed to be five stories, 140 units, with the pool and the court and the amenities out along the shorter side. The parking is split on both sides to accommodate the drive aisles, and there are two access points into the mall parking lot, which has a circulation drive around it, and two also on Azalea Drive. The landscape plan that accompanies this proposal shows the additional landscaping that has been proposed. City code for GR or even multifamily only requires 5% of the property to be landscaped, and this exceeds 20% in landscaping. As I previously discussed, but didn't make specific mention, Azalea Drive is a local street and would not, for a multifamily, require a sidewalk. However, a meandering sidewalk, you can barely see it on the bottom of this illustration, is proposed by the developer all the way along the length of Azalea, which could meet up with a future sidewalk when the city reconstructs the western portion of Azalea Drive when it's put into 31st Street. Just a table showing the existing general retail requirements for property on the left-hand column under the green heading, and then to the right is the proposed PD, showing the differences in the setbacks. Basically, this project exceeds the existing GR requirements as far as additional setbacks, additional masonry, additional trees. There would only be 22 total trees required under our code if they were developing this according to a GR zoning, and their proposal is to plant 79 trees. And actually, our development coordinator took a look at the site plan and counted, I think, 81 or 82. So, there are quite a number of additional trees proposed, as well as a number of bushes. The architectural elements for the building will have a number of enhancements, and currently, our existing requirements would have there be none. Traffic circulation was identified as a potential issue on this site. As you'll see in the center of the screen in green is the property. There are two red arrows pointing northwest and two red arrows pointing southeast that are approximately the locations of the egress from the property. To the south is to Azalea Drive. To the north, it is into the portion of the property that the mall currently owns, and there are easements put in place. there are easements put in place when the property was platted that would continue this use in the future. The larger red arrows show the traffic circulation out to 31st Street, over to Lowe's Drive, and also accessing the loop, and then to Lowe's Drive going south to Marlin Wood. There was some additional traffic considerations brought forth by citizens as well. So we took a look at the ITE transportation engineer trip generation rates, and for general retail shopping center use, the peak hour trip rate that they use is 4.89 per 1,000 square feet. And for apartments, it is .58 per unit. So when you calculate those based on the number of units that are proposed, it comes out to 81 peak hour trips, and the same number of peak hour trips would occur with a 16,500 square-foot shopping center, which a much larger shopping center would fit on this property with the parking. And just as a point of comparison, the dealers that is now vacant was 95,000 square feet. Here's a view of the proposed apartment building. This is from the amenities side, so you can see the pool is here, and at the back is where Azalea Drive runs. The property is, because of its shape, it sits a little different on the lot to the actual side of the property, is what you see from Azalea and also from the mall. In the rear view, you see the length from the mall, and then the front view is from the public plaza on these elevations. All PDs have conditions, of course, and this one's no different. We have included the landscaped area that the developer's proposing to exceed our code at 20% with the numbers of trees and bushes. There is a 10-foot landscape buffer yard that runs along the front edge with Azalea that also has that sidewalk, as I mentioned. And of course, the building elevations may change slightly with construction, since there is no building permit on this yet, but they would substantially comply with what had been supplied. And if there were any changes to the development site plan in relation to how the building lays on the lot, that would be related, any drainage considerations that, at the building permit stage, that would come forward, that would not be considered a substantial change. The developers also have been encouraged to explore, excuse me, an additional driveway if they need it. Pardon me. Six notices were mailed. One was received in agreement from the property owner across, as you'll see in the green A across Azalea Drive. And as I mentioned previously, Temple School District did return an agreement letter. Staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the subject property to PD MF3 in accordance with the conditions as presented and with the site development plan. P&amp;Z, on March 5th, they voted eight to zero to approve the rezoning per staff's recommendation. And I'm available for any questions or comments, the developer and the developer and the owner, and their engineers here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Counsel, any questions? None? All right. Then at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. There being none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item number nine.
Motion to approve as presented.
I second that motion.
We have a motion in the second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
I'd like to preface my vote by saying, thanking the mall owners for working with us, the staff, in laying some of the issues related to traffic. Traffic is a huge issue in District III, and thank you very much. We're really appreciative. The mall is really important to Temple, and we're very, very thankful. And I vote yes.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Item 10, first reading in a public hearing, item number Z-FY-18-15. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing rezoning from agriculture to general retail proposed for three plus or minus acres, and multifamily dwelling one proposed for one plus or minus acres located on the east side of State Highway 317, approximately 1,100 feet south of its intersection with Hogan Road, and it's addressed as 5701 State Highway 317. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Speaker.
Some of these next slides you may remember from the workshop, and I'll just kind of go through those briefly. Again, just to orient you to where the property is located, it's approximately 1,100 feet south of Hogan Road on the east side of State Highway 317. And as you may recall, and as you just described, the item was initially submitted for a total of four acres, three acres of general retail, and one acre of multifamily one. That is what was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on March 5th. Several items were discussed in detail, and the request was tabled as a result of some of those issues, which resulted in a meeting between the applicant and staff to look at other options. And what came out of that meeting was a substitution of neighborhood service on three acres, instead of going from neighborhood service, or from GR, rather, to neighborhood service on three acres, and a withdrawal of the multifamily one zoning request on the eastern one acre. And so that eastern one acre, shown by the graphic on the right, would remain agricultural. At the March 19th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote six to zero per staff's recommendation for the NS on the westernmost acres, again, for NS, and the eastern one acre to remain as agricultural. So just some background of the request itself, which was retained. The existing buildings are being proposed to be converted for office uses, and additional uses would be possible at a future time. In accordance with UDC Section 3.13, plating but would be required prior to the construction of a new principal building on the property, and that plat would address access, the adequacy of existing utilities, as well as drainage, both post and existing drainage conditions. Those were some of the issues that were brought up during the planning and zoning public hearing portion. Tech Dot has issued a permit to expand the existing driveway on the property from 16 feet to 24 feet, and Bell County Health Department has authorized the use of the existing septic for an office use up to three employees. So the withdrawal of the multifamily one portion of the request does increase a buffer distance to approximately 327 feet between the newly requested NS zoning boundary and the residence that is shown in this picture on the right. And again, this is an approximate, but it would be within a 327-foot distance. So with the requested neighborhood service zoning, the proposed office use is compliant. The neighborhood service office use does allow limited retail and service uses and are compatible along appropriate sections of State Highway 317. Terms of the future land use map, suburban commercial is appropriate for retail and office uses, and does support the neighborhood service use and the zoning. The suburban residential, it's shown in the yellow, again, would no longer be in play because the one acre to the east has been withdrawn. Both water and sewer are available to the property, and the existing septic system would be sufficient for an office use up to three employees. The water line is shown in blue, and the, any future plat would address the extension of the sewer line, which is to the south, the extension Oak Hills Drive. Terms of the thoroughfare plan and trails, again, with the improvements along 317, improvements do include a 10-foot sidewalk on the east side of State Highway 317. The proposed local connector trail would be addressed by the upsized sidewalk from six feet to 10 feet. The sidewalk upsizing would be paid for by the city and would be designed by Tech Dot. As a discussion item during the Planning and Zoning Commission review was the improvements to 317, including the limited median breaks. I wanted to show this through the public process to show that median breaks would be provided at Oak Hills as well as Hogan. And so traffic movements would be limited to right out, and any return traffic either for south and northbound would include, or may include, a U-turn at those median breaks. So just some photos of the property and the surrounding area. Again, the photograph on the left is of the subject property. This is an existing unoccupied building that would be converted to the proposed office use. And to the right would be looking toward the north. Again, you can see some of the dirtwork that is associated with the 317 improvements. To the south is an existing residence, also on acreage, and to the east is an existing residence on acreage. The driveway is the access to that residence, and the fence is the approximate boundary of the requested area. And to the west across 317 are also the existing single-family residences on acreage. So just a table showing the dimensional standards for the current agricultural, as well as the proposed neighborhood service. I have included the GR dimensional standards, and included in your staff report also included the general retail uses, since they were part of the initial request, and that's what was advertised. On this table specifically would be the uses that would be identified in the neighborhood service, does include the residential uses, single-family uses, as well as multifamily uses that would be associated primarily of a townhouse. Those uses in the neighborhood service would not include a triplex or a duplex or an apartment. Again, those would not be included, but does include a number of retail and service uses, as well as uses that would be required with a conditional use permit. So buffering and screening would be required. That buffering and screening would be in the form of either landscaping or a solid six-to-eight-foot-high fence or wall. Along the common boundary, continuous buffering and screening is required. This is between non-residential or multifamily uses and in the agricultural or residential zoning district or use. So again, the buffering and screening would still be in play, even with the multifamily one zoning being dropped from the request. Since traffic was brought up as a discussion during the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've provided a table just to show an example of some of those uses and some of the peak hour trip rates that would be triggered. We've included some GR uses just as a reference point, but primarily those uses in black are those that would be permitted within the general retail, or I'm sorry, the neighborhood So public notification was part of the process. Four notices were sent out. One notice was returned in agreement. Two notices were returned in disagreement. Again, there are three that are shown on the, or the map, rather. The fourth actually was noticed to the property owner, and presumably the property owner, applicant would be not opposed to the rezoning. So again, with the notification initially advertised with the general retail and the multifamily one, land area in opposition that had been received at or prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission is still in effect, since the advertising is still for the larger land area. Forty-seven percent land area is in opposition, as shown by the beige color, and that does trigger the four-fifths vote required by city council in order to approve. That's per UDC Section 3.4, so being with one council member absent, it would be a unanimous vote tonight to approve. So in terms of the criteria that staff uses to review and analyze the request, the four areas or the request is in compliance with those criteria. So staff recommends approval of the request for a rezoning from agricultural to neighborhood service on the three westernmost acres. The P&amp;Z recommendation at the March 19th meeting voted six to zero to approve the rezoning per staff's recommendation. Because the initial request included the GR, if there is a motion to approve, we would just need clarification that it is either per staff's recommendation or per P&amp;Z recommendation to clarify that for the neighborhood service. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Counsel, any questions? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I was just hearing what he was saying about that on, I just Googled on my phone, between Hogan's Road and Tarver's Drive. Could you show that piece of the?
The cross-section?
Yes, sir. Okay, about Middle Ways on Hogan's and Tarver, on the west side of the highway is the gravel pit. And I was just wondering, is that access going to be of intersection for the gravel pit, or do trucks have to come around and go take their, going towards Belton, they take their right to the gravel pit, when they come back out, they take the left and have to turn around in one of those cross-sections there that y'all have in the thing? Because that could be a hazard to the traffic because of the gravel pit and the gravel trucks coming through that area. I just want to point that out to y'all.
You're talking about the raised center median?
Yes, ma'am. Because there's going to be a median there. Right now, you know, it's pretty deadly now because them trucks, they go this way or that way. There with that median in there, they're going to have to come in and take their right. But some roads down the road, they're going to have to turn back around if they're coming back, you know, going north of 317. So that might be something y'all might want to consider about in that part.
Mr. Zepner, the 317 project is actually a Tech Dot project. It's not a City of Temple project.
Yes, ma'am.
My understanding, though, is that the entrance to the quarry will remain where it is. It is not being, the owners of that property did not agree to move it to the intersection.
Okay.
But I do think that Tech Dot has installed some additional capacity at the signal to help improve the safety of that. So we appreciate your comments, and we'll pass them on to Tech Dot.
But yeah, because that could be something later on if it wasn't looked into correctly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Zepner. Anybody else? No further comments. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item number 10.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation. Does that meet the language that's required, Mark?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation was the NS and the ag remaining?
Correct. NS on three acres, and the fourth acre would remain agricultural.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington.
Aye.
Councilmember Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
First reading in a public hearing on item Z-FY-18-15. First reading of public hearing on item Z-FY-18-16. Consider adopting an ordinance authorizing a rezoning and site development on 81 acres from Agriculture Zoning District to Plan Development Single Family II Zoning District addressed as 1810 South P Ridge Road in the Baldwin Robertson survey abstract number 17, I'm sorry, abstract number 17, Temple, Texas. Ms. Mary, are you ready?
Yes, I have my trusted water bottle. Thank you. Good evening again. This is second of the PDs, as I referenced previously. This one also had a P&amp;Z meeting on March the 5th. It is for a large acre subdivision off of South P Ridge Road. Some background on the property. The tract is shown in the center of the map in green. You'll notice a red, kind of red squiggly line. That is a depiction of the developers offered to relocate South P Ridge Road and straighten out that dog leg that currently occurs. They would relocate it through that portion of their property. It is 81 acres and two tracts. There is a second tract, a very tiny second tract in the bottom right-hand corner of that property. It's bordered by Carriage House Trail subdivision here on the other side of the drainage area that is under, or would be under city control in a proposed land swap. A little bit more about that in a bit. And then the Southern Draw subdivision is here to the right. There are some more state homes here along this second curve of South P Ridge, and then some 2F property is here approximately where the end of that relocated roadway would be. They are proposing a residential subdivision with a SF2 base, and they're also proposing a, not at this meeting, but a future land swap with the city that would allow connectivity to the North Linear Park from the city's proposed Southwest Park, which is shown here on the southern border of the property. Some site photos to orient you. This is the view to the southeast on the first of the dog legs. So South P Ridge Road comes this way, turns at right angles to the left, and then turns again to the right. The subject property is here behind the yellow sign, and the proposed future orientation of South P Ridge would continue and cut this approximately three-acre corner off here. This is another view, a little closer up of that corner. The developer is proposing 2F or duplex, the possibility to develop that three acres in duplexes, as it will be set apart and aside from the rest of the subdivision. Another view, straight into the property, and you can see there is an old farmhouse on the property. It was an old homestead. The view to the west is on the top part, left-hand part of the screen, and then at the bottom is looking north along South P Ridge Road. The current area zoning is Ag, which is shown in green, and there's quite a bit of green Ag property surrounding it. The residential property for Carriage House Trails here is the, in SF2, and then a PD for the Southern Draw, SF1 is to the north, and that 2F property, which was a PD, is shown in the brown here, and then there's another SF2 zone property here. There's some SF3 property on the right-hand side of the screen, so it's a mix of Ag and residential subdivision zoning. The future land use map has almost the entire viewable portion of the map in suburban residential, so of course it would be in compliance with this request. There are water and sewer services nearby, and they would be available to the property once it was developed. As I mentioned before, those same sections of code apply to this PD as well, including the development site plan that would be binding. And here it is. It's very complicated, and so I will walk you through it step by step. The blue dotted lines represent this portion that is currently being proposed to be rezoned PD SF2 tonight. That is the subject property that the developer owns. As I mentioned, a future land swap is one of the proposals that would come along with later. The dark green in the blue lines, and then below the blue lines is the final portion that the developer is proposing would be, the subdivision. The lighter green inside the blue lines, they would propose to swap with the city. And then the proposed city regional park is shown, as I showed earlier. It is to the south of this property. The realignment of the road is just conceptual up here with the dotted yellow that shows how that corner would be cut away from the rest of the subdivision. And then the request for this PD is for the possibility of duplexes on that corner portion on 60-foot lots minimum. The thoroughfare and trails map shows a trail that runs through the subject property, as you can see, along this, basically it goes, makes a linear, nice linear park to the north all the way to Adams. It's under city ownership, and then the city portion is here where it would meet up. And that is, the proposal would be for the potential future land swap would allow that trail to be constructed and would join those two portions. And South P Ridge Road is shown as a collector in its current configuration with that dog leg. There are a number of PD conditions on this PD, and we'll go through them one at a time, that it would be in substantial compliance with this development site plan. They are proposing similar setbacks for 20 feet in the front, 10 in the rear, 10 in the side setbacks instead of the, SF2 has 15 on the street side, so they're proposing 10 feet side setbacks, and then five-foot setbacks on the interior lots. They would provide paved trailheads to the adjacent city trails once the subdivision is constructed. They are proposing that any homes adjacent to the Southern Draw subdivision property would be a maximum of one story to address concerns of the residents in that subdivision that were heard at the Planning and Zoning Meeting. They're also proposing that no single residential lots would have drive access onto that realigned South P Ridge Road that runs through their property. There would all either be street access into the bulk of the subdivision, and the corner area would have perhaps a shared drive, but it would be only shared rather than individual, and there would be no backing out provision on those. Access to that portion for the majority of the lots, whether they're developed as single or family or two-family, would come from the existing dog leg portion of South P Ridge that would remain. And that's condition six as well on the two-family. They're proposing no more than 350 total lots. They don't have their final configuration yet pending the zoning. They are proposing sodded front yards, a tree minimum in each front yard with a two-inch diameter breast height size, and then three 5-gallon shrubs and five 1-gallon shrubs in the front yard. The front facades would have a minimum of two architectural features each, and that could consist of roof breaks, columns, gables, so they'd be varied. And each home facade would be a minimum of 80% masonry, and that would include hardy plank or cementitious siding, except for any gables or dormers and that, those sorts of areas. Then the front facade would be a minimum of 50% masonry excluding hardy plank, so there would be some brick and stone for each one of those units. Residential sidewalks, as shown on the plan, would be installed as the homes are constructed, and then also the sidewalk along South P Ridge would be built along with oversizing the roadway to collector standards. There were 51 notices mailed out to surrounding property owners. There were two received in agreement from the property owner here on this PD 2F property. There were 10 in disagreement received, with the exception of the one property that fronts on South P Ridge. The remainder were all in Southern Draw subdivision. In addition, there were nine other notices that were received that had been circulated among the neighbors that were for properties not inside this 200-foot mandated border. And here's the opposition map that shows the property owners that were in opposition, and they total 8.51% of that area, so the supermajority provision is not triggered since that requires, is set at 20%. Staff is recommending approval of the reserve at P Ridge rezoning request to PD SF2 in accordance with the site development plan and the previously mentioned conditions. And then on a future city council approval, if one is forthcoming of any land swap, that additional portion that would be added to the development would be required to be rezoned at that time. At their March 5 meeting, the P&amp;Z Planning and Zoning Commission voted 8 to 0 to approve the rezoning per staff's recommendation. If you have any comments or questions, the developer is here from WBW as well.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address, I'm sorry, anyone wishing to speak on this matter, they may do so. Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, J.D. Zepner. I was just picked up that y'all was going to build some duplexes there. Are they going to be single-bedroom duplexes or multi-bedroom duplexes? That's one of the questions I have for the developer and whatnot. Because I have some single-bedroom duplexes in my neighborhood, and they kind of draw a little bit on terror-free type of people over there. And that part of the town there has some pretty valuable real estate off in there. I would just hate to see the value of those people's properties that they pay the taxes and the value of the properties with single-bedroom duplexes. Multi-bedroom duplexes might support a better family unit over there to adapt with the people with the nicer homes. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Will the developers in the audience, he can address that?
Good evening, the counsel. Thanks for having me. My name is Josh Welch, WBW Development. Address is 3,000 Illinois Avenue, Coe, Texas. I guess first off to answer your question, with the restrictions that we have in place, which are many with the PD and the, just the expense of developing this property and what these things are going to be priced at, we don't physically build the vertical structures, so we won't be the ones building the duplexes. We do the land development side of it. But with the prospective possible buyers that we've talked to, I don't foresee that happening. So, because it just, it's not going to, it would not be financially feasible to make it work for them, to be able to do those. The other things I was going to add is, we have spent considerable time with your lovely staff over here in Temple. As you can see, it's been quite an undertaking, kind of putting this whole project together. And I think this is a very good example of both the public world and the private world working together to be able to come up with a plan that works for both of us that I do believe will enhance this area and not deter from it. There are multiple PDD items in there, which you saw, between architectural standards and landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We did get unanimous P&amp;Z approval. One of the concerns at P&amp;Z from the majority of the neighbors, as you saw, that opposed the, were there next to us that opposed us from Southern Draw, was not necessarily the zonings, but they were, one gentleman said he had a pool in his backyard and was afraid of a two-story house getting built behind him where somebody behind him could look into his backyard with them swimming in their pool and in their bathing suits. And so since then, we did agree to add one more condition, that any of the homes adjacent to those property owners would be single stories, and we would limit those to single stories. So we've heard many of the residents' concerns. We've tried to take them into account as best as possible. And just like the map said, the one thing I'll add and close out with is, the zonings and the densities and things that we're asking for, we do feel like it's compatible with what's around us, just like, as is called for in a PD and in your regulations, is a PD is supposed to be able to conform with the surrounding neighborhoods and the surrounding uses. Both the duplexes are next to where there's already duplex properties owned, our SF2 property is next where SF2 property is owned. And then with all the restrictions we have, we do feel very much like it's going to enhance this area, and the neighbors will be happy with it once we're done with it. So with all that being said, I'd be happy to answer any other questions y'all may have.
Counsel? Thank you, Mr. Welch. At this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 11.
Mayor, can I ask, Lynn, can you go back to your condition slide? Do we have that final condition in staff's recommendation that?
The one-story?
For the homes?
Yeah.
Number four.
That wasn't on your slide.
Yes, I added it to number four, homes adjacent to Southern Draw.
Very good.
Earlier, I think it was at the bottom.
I just wanted to make sure. So if you make a motion for staff recommendation, you would be including that condition.
Thank you. I do want to say before I vote, I'm very interested in what's going on over here. If I were 18 again, I could probably throw a baseball there from my backyard. Not anymore. But I've got Mr. Welch's number and speed dial. I've talked to him quite a bit lately, and I do appreciate him and his willingness to work with the city to address some issues that we've had over there, and I appreciate our staff very much for working with him and getting some of these issues addressed. I know everybody's not going to be happy with it. Nobody ever is, but I think that we've come to a good mutual agreement here between the city and the developer.
Very good. I agree. Counsel, your pleasure, on item, let's change the page. 11.
Motion to approve item 11 as presented by staff. Second.
You have a motion in the second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long?
Aye.
Councilmember Pilkington?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Aye.
Thank you all for attending. This is a long meeting. This meeting is adjourned.